So, does any other selectmen have anything they'd like to say?
I'd like to stand up. Thank you, David, from everybody.
Oh.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'll join Linda and gratulating David, and I know that others will do the same. I think we all have the same idea of Linda, that you've served us very well.
Yeah, I'll also concur with all that, and it was kind of fun to actually watch you sit down there and blush a little bit, Dave.
Thank you.
Very best of luck to you, Dave.
Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Owen, do we have a need for a non-public session?
We do. We have matters of real estate and personnel to discuss.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the minutes of May 2nd. Does anybody have any corrections or additions? Hearing none, I'd like to have a motion to accept. Do I have a... All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next, I'd like to open up a public hearing. The public hearings, the first one will be 68 Hours of Hunger to hold a 1K walk event on June 23rd, 2018, from 12:00 PM to 6:00 PM, beginning at 136 South Main Street and ending at 51 North Main Street. Is there anybody here who'd like to speak to this event? Come on up and state your name for the record and for the people at home. We need... Hold on a second. We need to turn on the mic.
I'm sorry.
Yep. We're gonna get it turned on right now for you. I'm sorry. Okay. Okay. My name is Sally Humer. I am the local director of N68 Hours of Hunger for Wolfboro, Tuftonboro, Osiphe, Middleton, Osiphe Head Start, and the Wolfboro Children's Center. And we are just delighted that Keller Williams' Adam Dow branch... How do you... Is that what it is?
Sure.
That works. Has offered to sponsor a 1K endurance walk. That's a kind of a pun, you know, walking 1K. For the benefit of... All the money raised will go to the organization, and we in turn spend all that money feeding 124 children that we are taking care of as of now, for weekend food. You want to speak?
This'll be our second year. Last year, we benefited the Child Advocacy Center. This year, we know there's a strong need at the N68 Hours of Hunger organization. I know we submitted the permit to you folks with sort of the broad strokes, but did you have any questions for us about particulars?
I will ask it. I'll give the public a chance to make any comments first. Is there anybody in the public who'd like to make a comment about this special event permit? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members? Only thing I have is that they might not know what 136 North Main Street to 51... I mean, 136 South Main Street to 151... 51 North Main Street. What distance in terms of walking, so they can picture?
Sure. I have a map.
Yeah, I was meaning for the people that are home or in the audience who are... Yeah, tell them the location where they...
Got it. So, it'll be Keller Williams' main office, which is next... Would be the start. That's the 136 South Main. So, that's the building right next to the Corner Store. And then, it'll end at the sort of patio space in between Beverages and Nolan's.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Does any other members of the board have any questions? Hearing none, can I have a motion?
I'm gonna move to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to N68 Hours of Hunger to hold a 1K walking event on June 23rd, 2018, from 12:00 PM to 6:00 PM, beginning at 136 South Main Street and ending at 51 North Main Street.
Second.
Okay, I have a first and say, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All righty, you have your permit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to open up the next public hearing. It's Harriman Hill, Post 18 of the American Legion, to hold the Memorial Day Parade and Service on May 28th, 2018, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, beginning at Brewster Academy, stopping at Carpenter School, to the Wolfboro Post Office, and ending at the Community Bandstand. Is there somebody here who'd like to come on up to the microphone? State your name.
My name is Harold Chamberlain of the local Chamberlain's. And we've been doing this event since, I don't know how long. Longer than David Bauer's been around here.
I think he started with the Civil War.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this event? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members, anybody have any comments? Only thing that I saw... Nope. I'm all set.
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit, Harriman Hill, Post Number 18, American Legion, to hold the Memorial Day Parade and Service on May 28th, 2018, 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, beginning at Brewster Academy, stopping at Carpenter School, Wolfboro Post Office, and ending at the Wolfboro Community Bandstand.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. You have your permit.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Yes.
Chairman, I have a question, and I was told I could present it to the board. I've been through all the departments in the town trying to find out who maintains the three signposts coming into town that the Alliance Club and Rotary have their announcements of their meeting nights. And couldn't find anybody, and was told to present it to the board. So, if you could...
Okay, we will look into it and find out. I'll send Mr. Owen after it.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll open up the next public hearing. It is Families in Transition- New Horizons to hold Hope House Open House Celebration on June 26th, 2018, from 1:00 PM to 4:30 PM in the Glendon Street parking lot. Is there somebody here to speak to this event? Come on up to the microphone and state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Bombardier, and this is Maggie Shoep behind me. We are here to... Representing Families in Transition New Horizons. We are requesting use of the Foss Field parking lot for our Hope House Open House Ceremony on Tuesday, June 26th, given your approval. I believe everyone's familiar with the Hope House, but just really quickly, I wanted to remind everyone. It will provide temporary, safe, and secure housing for families in need of assistance in the Lakes Region of Carroll County. The Hope House will offer shelter and social services to seven families at one time, and we're looking to open in June 2018. The reason for this request is that we have had a large outpouring of support from the community regarding the Hope House, and we want to have an open house to a ribbon cutting for this Hope House. And our building capacity is less than we think that we will... Is less than we think we'll have in attendance. We also know there are businesses conducting business in the building that day, and we don't want to be disruptive to them. So, our thought would be to have the reception outside in that Foss Field Recreation Area under a tent. We will require the parking lot on Tuesday, June 26th, from 8:00 to 4:30 for setup, but we're not sure if the tent company would need to go in earlier and pick up the tent later, so that's something that we would need to know when we would need to be in and out by. We've submitted an outdoor permit, and we have a map of where we could put the tent, which we received from the town office. We're currently working with a couple tent companies to figure out the best tent rental for this event. But we are here to ask you your approval of this event.
Okay, is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak to this event? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members?
Yeah. Question. Noticed on the form here that the fire rescue hadn't signed off on it. And we're also... We're working on tents. We're having tents here. There's usually a provision there for certification that they're, you know, fire resistant and stuff like that. So, I was just wondering if I just skipped a one person there in the front, or...
Yeah, I'm not really aware why fire rescue hadn't signed off at the point that this went into the agenda packets. It may have come in subsequent to that. They would require a tent permit, of course, and it would need to be fire resistant.
I asked Dave Ford about putting any spikes or poles into the blacktop, and he has spoken to families in transition. And if they put any holes in the blacktop or the mechanism, they will fill it in and patch it on leaving. So, that was the only question I had. Does anybody else have any questions or issues? Okay, can I have a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve the issuance of a temporary outdoor event permit to families in transition to hold their open house... Open house event on June 26th, 2018, 1:00 to 4:30 at a portion of the Glendon Street parking lot, with the condition that the tent permit gets signed off on by the fire rescue.
And that they patch any holes.
Patching the holes in any park... In the parking lot.
I will second that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? You have your permit.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, the next item on the agenda is also a public hearing, and I'll read the notice. The Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, May 16th, 2018, at 6:35 PM at the Wolfboro Town Hall, Great Hall, 84 South Main Street, Wolfboro, New Hampshire, to discuss the application of the Lakes Region Newcomers Club for a permit for the sale and consumption of beer and wine at the game night on June 8th, 2018, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM at the Great Hall pursuant to Town Code Chapter 5 alcohol beverages. So, is there anybody here to speak? Thank you.
Yes, good evening. My name is Randy Zimmerman. I'm the president of the Lakes Region Newcomers Club, here to ask for your kind permission to do a BYOB, not sale of alcohol. Wine and beer only at our event on the 8th.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this event? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members, are there any issue or concerns?
I'll move to approve the...
I have one. I just noticed in the back that your insurance rider ends June 6th, 2018. As soon as you get a new one, would you give it to...
I delivered a new one to Ms. Marble a day or two ago.
Well, didn't get our pack. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Dave, make your motion.
Make a motion to approve the issuance of a BYOB, beer and wine only permit, Lakes Region Newcomers Club, for their game night event, Great Hall, at Town Hall on June 8th, 2018.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Three seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? You've got your permission.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is the bulk vote, and I have two items that I need to remove. I need to remove Item B1 and F1. So, I'd like to make a motion to remove those two. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Why don't we... I'll make a motion to accept the rest of the bulk vote, and then I'll give it to you, Dave. Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the rest of the items on the bulk vote. Do I have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Dave, will you do...
You want to do what?
It's B1 and F1. Okay.
B is in B1.
Would we need a motion to approve B1 and F1 that were removed?
So, move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is an appointment to the zoning board of adjustment, and I will also turn this over to you, Dave, and step down.
Hey, we have an opening on the board of adjustment for a full-time member. We have two applicants. We have Suzanne Ryan and Peter Colcourt. Are they both here? I see Suzanne. Okay. Peter, you want to get up and just say hello to us and introduce yourself? What you do?
I'm Peter Colcourt. I've lived in Wolfboro for 13 years now, and I own and operate the Downtown Grill Cafe.
Suzanne?
Good evening, Suzanne Ryan. Some of this you've heard before, but I'd like to recap. I've served as a full-voting member since 2008. I've served with many different memberships and chairman. Served as vice chairman. Tendance has been very good. Currently, the ZBA has only one long-term seasoned member of the four that are there, and you've just appointed one having no land use experience and one having served only one year as an alternate, and the other member was an alternate for only two years. I have come to Wolfboro and to the ZBA with close to 40 years of land use experience under the New Hampshire state laws, land use laws. The town has invested in me by sending me to the law lectures that are put on by the state, and I've attended one, if not two, a year for the last eight years. And by the way, the last one that was held a few weeks ago was one of the best ones I've ever attended. And the takeaway from that was we need to work on the rules of procedure for the ZBA. Without those in order, we'd leave the town liable to incorrect procedures. And as a note, there was no new member or any member from Wolfboro at that lecture. It's unfortunate because it is something that's in the budget for all of us to go to. I believe it's perceived by some segments of the town that the ZBA and the rules of the town are too restrictive. And I think it depends on who you talk to, because there's both sides of the coin on that. But just to give you an idea, I went through a few years of town reports, and I was curious myself to see what the balance was. Are we... Are we too restrictive, or are we not? And in 2013, there were nine applications, four variances, one waiver, and one appeal. And they were all granted. In 2014, 24 applications, 16 approved, two denied. In 2015, 10 variances, one special exception. Nine of those were approved. In 2015, different members voted no. Hotta voted no, Fred Tedusi voted no, Hadi voted no. So, there were a couple of noes there. I voted no a couple of times. I voted nine times yes. So, there was a total of 11 votes on applications that year. 2016, there was 17 applications, of which nine were approved, and I moved to approve all of those nine applications. I voted no four times. The board voted no two times. So, there was a... Two times I voted no, but the board voted no two times also. 2017, I became an alternate, so my voting was less frequent. But the board had... The board as a total had seven approvals with three noes. So, the... It's trending that the approvals are way more than the denials. And then, in 2018, so far, the board has had seven approvals with three noes. I sat in a couple of times. I voted three times yes, two times no, and I moved for the two approvals. The thing that I hear, and I'm out and about town like many of you are too, and I hear that we're too restrictive with downtown. And I must say that in this period of time, there were only four commercial applications. There were 42 residential applications, five special exceptions. And those were all that were approved, and the board as a whole said no 10 times in all those years. So, the board... The board is not too restrictive, nor am I. And lastly, I would say that I bring knowledge, experience. I'm always prepared. I keep abreast of new and changing laws and case laws. The applicants deserve a knowledgeable, well-informed, balanced board. They shouldn't have to get jerked around because they just don't... Most of them hire lawyers, and they come in as citizens, and they don't know their way around the paperwork. And this is... This is not a board that is kind of learn-as-you-go. It's just... It's one that you need to have had some prior land use experience. So, with that, I think I've covered all my bases. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions at this point? This is one position. There are two applicants. Or motion from somebody?
I'm gonna move Peter Colcourt for the full-time position of ZBA.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Peter, do you want to get sworn in by Matt Waterman in the meetings of the first Monday of each month? If you have any questions, Matt, the town planer, can help you out with that? Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the monthly budget expenditure report and revenue.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, there's one other appointment.
One other appointment.
Oh, sorry.
Library.
Library.
Library, sorry, Peter. Come on up for the library.
Hi, good evening. I'm Susan Raiser, and I'm one of the library trustees. And I would like to introduce Mike Babylon, who has applied to become an alternate library trustee. He has the unanimous support of all of the library trustees, so I would ask that you appoint him as an alternate. Would you like to say?
Again, I'm Mike Babylon. I've been a 16-year resident of Wolfboro. I moved here from the seacoast. And libraries very important to me. I remember when I was checking out Wolfboro as a possible town to live. I did notice the nice lake, but even more important to me was to check out the library, believe it or not. And as soon as I walked in the door, I knew I had the right place. Lots of changes coming from the library, and I'd love to be part of it.
Okay, thank you. Board members, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. First of all, I question whether the library is more important than the lake, but I do audit the library, and I love the library. And Susan Raiser, by the way, is moving to Texas. She's one of my favorite people in town as far as getting things done, so we're gonna miss her. But I will nominate... I will nominate Michael D. Babylon as the alternate member.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, you've been appointed. Same thing, you need to be sworn in. All righty, now, Peter. We'll move on to number six, monthly budget report.
Good evening, Pete Chamberlain.
Congratulations.
Director of Finance.
That was a little bit of a joke.
Hopefully, you had a chance to read my report.
Thank you.
At this particular point in the year, it should be about a third of the way through, which you'll notice the first three funds were pretty much around 31%. The sewer at 52, and Pop Whalen at 40, with an average of 32%. I have a couple of comments. One, hopefully you noticed my capital report.
I did. It was very nice.
Status report. I figured it was time to do one of those. And there's one item that I hadn't had a chance to put in this report, but I've got preliminary figures on fuel oil for this next... And it's going to be higher than it was anticipated. So, I should be getting pricing next week. I'll know about where we're at. And I've talked with Dave Ford, and I'm gonna be talking to the other department heads tomorrow, too.
Yeah, because there seemed to be a couple buildings with heating oil and stuff. We're gonna need to keep an eye on that.
So, there's always something. I guess this year, it's gonna be fuel.
Yep. Well...
And also, I handed out the revised revenue report. They seem to be pretty much on track. We'll see how the transfer station ends up at the end of the year in light of things going on in China right now. It seems to be pretty much in line.
Okay, and I want to also thank you. I always have 10,000 questions, and Peter gets me the answer. And I have sent that out to the board, is that the legal fees are pretty well-used up for the year. And I asked for a breakdown, which the board has received, on where we have spent the most amount of money, and the most amount of money has been spent on Tina Fey. So, that has hit us fairly hard. But we're going to need to take a look and keep a close eye on our legal expenses finishing up this year. That's why I got that for everybody. And also, Matt Sullivan gave us information about the heating and why this building was so high. And thank everybody for doing that. I know sometimes I have a lot of questions. Any other comments from anybody? All righty, thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is commercial vessel landing permit, Wunupasaki Adventures. Is there somebody here to speak to this event? Or this permit?
Hi, my name is Sharon Wells, and I'm doing adventures on Lake Wunupasaki in the outdoors, hiking the islands, biking the scenic shores and other. And I wanted to get a permit for the commercial vessel.
Okay, and I'm assuming that this will be at the... You'll dock at the same spot you did last year, where the Mount Washington comes in?
Yes.
Okay. And that your sign will go in the same location? You had one there last year?
Yes.
Okay. I'm fine. Does anybody else, any other selectmen have any questions? I did check out that, you know, your times didn't seem to conflict with anybody, so it seemed like a good schedule to me. Any other comments? Can I have a motion to grant the commercial vessel landing permit?
I move to approve and sign a commercial vessel landing permit for the Wunupasaki Adventures to operate its vessel at the town docks during the 2018 season.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye, opposed? Have your permit.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right, next item on the agenda is dock space for the Electric Department boat at dockside. Barry.
Barry. Good evening. Barry Mucciolo, Director of Operations for the Electric Department. Just as it's noted, I'm requesting a permanent dock space down there for the summer season for the Electric Department boat, preferably behind the fireboat, which years ago was our traditional spot down there. We used to always store it down there. Just to expedite getting out back and forth from the islands without having to trailer and trailer back and forth. And as you know, we make several trips in the course of a summer out there. So, it would be nice just to be able to jump in, go out, and save probably, you know, 35 minutes of time in travel and unloading and whatnot.
Board members, anybody have any comments or questions?
The only question I would have is... I'm gonna be on the side there is the... I'm trying to remember now if we had a permit application for the mailboat this year.
Not yet.
If they would all... If they would all fit in that side or not there, so...
I'm not sure. I went down there and looked. Does he still have a pontoon boat?
Yes. Yes.
I'm not sure a pontoon, we can ship...
If you look at my notes there, I did take some measurements and depicted what would be left after our boat and the fireboat.
It shows that there would be twenty-seven feet of dock space left.
I went down there and looked at it tonight. I'd be comfortable to moving the mailboat. I just think that that makes sense to do the fireboat, and then the electric department boat.
Again, many times, those trips out there are emergency response scenarios, so I would tend to agree that that's the best spot.
Yeah, we could move the mailboat to where we have that new access to the dock of the lake there right now, so...
Yes, we do, don't we? It may fit. If it doesn't fit, is the board comfortable finding another spot for the mailboat? Okay. So...
I move to approve the municipal electric department's request to permanently dock the electric department's boat at Dockside during the summer and fall season.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You got your slip.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right. The next item on the agenda is the Child Advocacy Center fundraising project. Going to need to bring the microphone down for you.
Good evening. My name is June Connors, and my husband and I live on Blackberry Lane. I'm here to ask for your approval for a fundraiser for the Child Advocacy Center. I'm a very, I am very proud to be on the board of the Child Advocacy Center of Carroll County at Fifty-Six Union Street. The Advocacy Center is a child-friendly, family-focused, nonprofit organization. The center works in collaboration with law enforcement, medical personnel, social services, child advocacy agencies, and the county attorney's office to provide a coordinated system for response and care to children who are victims of sexual and/or physical abuse and their non-offending family members through a full utilization of a multi-disciplinary team. There are two reasons we would like to move forward with this fundraiser. One is to make the community aware of the good works the center provides. Since January of this year, there have been forty-seven new cases in Carroll County, seven of them here in Wolfboro. Although this is a sad statistic, the center is a valuable resource for these families in crisis. The second reason is to raise funds to continue to provide help for families in need, using the funds to pay for day-to-day operating expenses. The fundraiser we have chosen is a Buy a Brick fundraiser, and the company's name is Bricks Are Us, and have been in business for twenty-five years. Families would purchase a brick and have their family's names or dates or a special message engraved in their brick. The bricks have a lifetime guarantee and are permeable. I met with Christine Collins, the Director of Parks and Recreation, two weeks ago. We thought that the space under the sign at the back bay near the parking lot would be a great spot. The area will be professionally installed and landscaped by Pine Ridge Landscaping. Once families make their purchase and the bricks are installed, we hope they will return year after year to visit their brick. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
And this is a sample of what the brick would look like.
Yes, Dave?
Purchase prices on the bricks, is there so much for so many words?
Nope.
Or is it just a flat rate?
A brick this size, you can really make it any price you want. It costs nine dollars for us, and most organizations sell them for about a hundred. Or you can get a bigger brick that's about doubled size, but for this brick, you get twenty-three characters, three lines. So, enough to say really what you want to say.
How long do you see taking to raise enough bricks to fill the area?
What you do is you decide on how much you want to fill in, and we were thinking about four hundred bricks, which only ends up being two plywood sheets. Sounds like a lot, but it's only two plywood sheets size. And you take your orders, and even if we only sold a hundred, we would still have four hundred bricks, and the three hundred would be blank. And anytime you sell one, you know, with the words on it, you just pop out the blank one and put in the new one. So, it can be an ongoing thing.
Okay, but in your initial installation, are you looking at doing it in the fall? Are you looking at next spring? Do you have kind of a timeframe?
Yep. I'm hoping we can get going by the Fourth of July, that we have all our orders all ready and everything. The company is, their customer service is amazing. They do everything that they say that they're going to do. And then we would start selling them over the summer, and hopefully by the fall, we would be able to have it installed and everything.
This is the proposed section.
Yes, Dave?
I see here you have square bricks, green bricks, yellow bricks. Could we make a requirement? It would be my preference if you could say that all the bricks have to be brick-colored and shaped like a brick with black lettering or something, so it...
So, it's all uniform?
So, they're all uniform?
Yep, exactly. That's exactly what we're going to do.
I'd like to make that a provision of anything we agree to.
Anybody else have any comment? The only question I had, and I don't have a big issue with it, is that we're letting a nonprofit organization use part of public land for a fundraising event. And if we let them do it, are we going to need to let other people do that? And I didn't know how other board members feel. I can deal with it, but I just thought it was something that we should at least...
It's a good issue.
...talk about and to think about whether we, that would cause us any issue in the past. You know, I support the Advocacy Center and its work.
Well, we have benches down that road.
That's somebody's, the public can use it. Yeah?
I don't have any problem with it.
I appreciate your bringing it up, and I parse this, there are nonprofits, and then there's a nonprofit, and this is a special, very special organization. And I don't think we're going to have a problem with that, but I appreciate you bringing it up, so I'd be supportive of it.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with it. I just wanted to make sure. Brad, you okay?
I'm okay with it, too, because I was thinking, too, you talk about nonprofits using public property for fundraising stuff. When we have, we have a use of facilities, say for a dance in here or something like that with, say, gala, something like that, isn't that the same idea there?
Similar.
Kind of raising some funds with it.
I'm just, yeah, this is permanently there.
Yeah, it's a little different.
That was the only difference.
But I'm perfectly fine with this, so...
Okay. Dave, you okay? All right.
As long as it's red, right, Dave?
It's red, and they're uniformed.
Absolutely.
Okay, who wants to be brave to give the motion?
Make a motion.
Okay.
I move that we allow these bricks. I don't see a motion here. Is there a motion here somewhere?
No, I didn't offer one because I didn't know what you were going to do.
I approve, I move that we approve the, allowing the Child Advocacy Center to place a limited number of bricks along the Bridge Falls path, the bricks being uniform in size and brick-colored with black lettering.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
You got your permission. Thank you. You're welcome. Okay, next item on the agenda is the Ward of a Bid for a New Fire Truck Engine. Chief Pinio?
Good evening. James Pinio, Fire Chief. As many of you are aware, we have a capital project coming up this year, which is the replacement of a twenty-year-old pumper. We are coming to you to request funds to be able to perform this replacement. Through the CIP plan, we have budgeted five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We have conducted a thorough evaluation, and we are here requesting five hundred eighty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars. We understand that this is a thirty-two thousand dollar increase and represents five-point-nine percent. How we got to this determination was through a lot of work. First of all, I'd like to thank two members of the committee that are here tonight, Jim Dearborn and Chad Foss. They put in many hours, as did Joel Dale and Tim O'Keefe. I'd also like to thank the town manager for his work in bringing some of the legal aspects through for the project. On March twelfth, we released the RFP to vendors, at which time they had basically a month to turn around with a proposal. We had the bid opening April sixteenth, and during that timeframe, we had three vendors who reached out to us for clarifications. During the bid opening, we had six respondents, which was very good, and our bid was very generic. We didn't tailor it to any one individual. We tailored it to what we, as a committee, best felt fit the town of Wolfboro. And as a result of that, we got some unique proposals. When we went through and evaluated the proposals, there was various criteria. First criteria was critical dimensions, which involved length, height, wheelbase, turning radius, and whatnot. From that point, we also reviewed the warranty documents, which some were provided, some were not. And then we looked at how the vendor themselves responded to the compliance, non-compliance form, and they all scored very high percentage-wise, until we looked at the actual specification. For better terms, some of them went through and simply pencil-whipped, yes, it's compliant, until we got into the nuts and the bolts of the specification. As a result of that, we feel that Seagrave's product came back best meeting the needs of the town, the department, based on their attention to detail, their construction techniques, and their superior trade-in value. We understand that there is an increase based on the CIP program, and there's been concerns regarding when the ladder truck is due for replacement. I believe you have in front of you a proposal that we have, as a department, unanimously come to the agreement that we push the ladder truck back. One year, we are able to absorb that increase in today's dollars and get this truck that is probably going to serve Wolfboro much better than the competitors. As you could see from the proposals, there's a wide range of pricing from five hundred and seventeen thousand dollars to six hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, and we feel that this is a good medium price that allows us to get into the best product for the town of Wolfboro. I'd like to answer any questions that you may have.
Yeah, I want to thank the chief for providing me with more information. What I asked was for him to put the new price on a CIP-type of spreadsheet and to do it over twenty years, because a lot of trucks don't, ten years doesn't really count for them. I asked him what he saw as a useful life, and you said twenty years. So, from looking at the material, it seems like we will have enough money in the CIP spreadsheet in the year to replace Ladder One. I'm glad it is pushed out a year. It was a year that it wasn't on the road. That made sense, but I didn't see anything that concerned me by spending the extra on it. It seems like it has a longer life. Brad?
Yeah, I reviewed all that information you'd gotten, too, and stuff, and appreciate the chief, you know, getting these spreadsheets out to us. The thing I noticed was on the, by bumping this out a year to replace Ladder One, we still use the same number, the nine hundred and fifty thousand in today's dollars. And back earlier, you were talking about a three to five percent increase annually on that. So, if there was a five percent increase, that would be about a forty-seven thousand, five hundred dollar increase in 2021, and then dropping down, going through the math of the remaining, of the running CIP total. When you get to 2023, you would be running in about a twenty thousand dollar deficit that year. So, we're basically, it's like we're bumping out that deficit from the current year we're going to be under in 2020. Now, we're going to be out in 2023, so it's delaying it a little bit, but...
It's still a deficit.
Still going to be a deficit down the road.
The one thing that I would advocate that we do, and the way we're proposing the replacement of this truck as well, is we don't pay for it until it arrives.
Right.
It's usually a year, and it's longer than that for an aerial. So, we're going to have another year's worth of CIP funding in there. The other thing is, this is the number provided by the manufacturer. That's before we sit down and start talking nitty-gritty.
Right.
I needed a quick number. He was able to provide us a quick number, and obviously, when we go into CIP, we're going to be looking at a little more accurate data.
And when you talked to me, you talked about maybe getting a demo model that would bring down the price, which is another thing I...
Again, if they're available. Sometimes they do have the availability of demo apparatus, which has got some advantages because they've been run across the road, and they've worked out a lot of the kinks on those vehicles. But it's the availability of them, which is an advantage for us because we have the funds set aside where a lot of communities don't have that advantage. So, it's all about finding...
Thank you. Paul?
Yeah, so you use the word nitties and gritties. So, you are able to sit across the table now that you've selected somebody and hone the sale price prospectively?
So, what they have done for us, they've held this price for us until July one. What we're looking to do is, if we go forward tonight, is to be able to sign the contract that locks in the price, then we can get to be able to sit down with them, iron all the finite details out, and get the construction of the vehicle started. We may be able to, and my goal is to try and reduce some of these costs, but I certainly do not have any intention of going above what we're requesting the funds.
So, when you sign the contract, again, just from my learning, the predicate here is it's premised on successful negotiation of a firm and final price and delivery. So, the town still has an ability at some point, although you may or may not ever use it, to say, "We couldn't get to terms."
I think you're at terms.
You're at terms.
Okay. It's just a matter of negotiation.
I got it. Okay, thank you.
And being able to work with that.
Okay, thank you.
I think I had some discussions with you as well, in reference to the engine, too, we have now with the frame issues. And I see that Seagrove...
Seagrave.
Seagrave has a lifetime warranty on their frame, structural, which is very uncommon. None of the others did, except for one. The other thing I noticed in the warranty reviews, that Seagrave had longer warranties on their parts than any of the others did. Some of them had none warranties. So, yeah, I don't have any issues, and I know I talked to you this morning in reference to the pushing the ladder truck out a year, and I have no issues with that either.
It seems like they really have done their homework and given us the kind of information that we can support something like this, and looking at the CIP going out and pushing it out and possibly getting a demo gives us some real flexibility here in the year out. Any other questions or comments by the board? Hearing none, would somebody like to do a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the award of the bid for a new pumper. I'll make a motion to approve the award of the bid for a new pumper, tanker, fire engine to replace engine two to Seagrave Fire Apparatus of Clintonville, Wisconsin, in the amount of five hundred and eighty-two thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and to reprogram the acquisition of a new ladder truck, the fire department, to the year 2021 in the town's capital improvement plan.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Jose, you have your approval to move forward.
Thanks, chief.
Thanks. Nice study.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the Route 28 Carter Project Preliminary Report.
Matt, can't you get any good batteries? Can't you get any good batteries for that thing?
Your talent.
The battery budget's going out of control.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Dave.
Okay, back in, okay now? So the committee began with the segment five, which was the Pickering Corner to Wolfboro Falls, not including Pickering Corner. And we had made some recommendations that went to DOT, Incorporated, an admissibly managed project that's under construction now. We'll talk about that a little later. The committee was reconvened in 2017 with the project, the Route 28 project, which is on the ten-year plan, which is scheduled for construction in the year 2024, with the price tag of about ten million dollars. The engineering was to start this fiscal year, so we thought, let's get back together, finish the job, and try to make sure that the DOT had the input from the town. We held many meetings, and we had, again, most of the committee members were back. We had a few new ones. What you have, I think everyone had a chance, hopefully, to get a copy of the report with the backup on it. Give kudos to Matt, who did a lot of this work in terms of putting together the report. And again, thanks to many of the committee members for their efforts on this. To get to the point tonight, what we're looking for is that the Board of Selectmen, our plan was always that we were going to come together, hopefully come with these recommendations, and the board would adopt them and pass them on to DOT. But in our deliberation, I think we were very careful, and at many points, we said, let's not vote on one or the other, because we were having good debate at the meetings. Then we had two really well-attended public meetings in which we get more input. And it, everyone, I think, went through the process of, oh, this option is good, this option is not so good. And I should say, most of the effort was focused on Pickering Corner. I think we're all in agreement on the cross-section, which would be similar to what's going to go down to Senate Street, which will have our sidewalk, a grass panel, a four-foot kind of a bike lane, and then reduce eleven-foot travel lanes in each direction. And that's pretty standard. So that was kind of an agreement, and that's in here. We had some other intersections with some minor issues on, but the big issue and most discussion was on Pickering Corner. And to that end, we had some really good debate. I thought it was really healthy. But we came up with three or four good questions, which we really couldn't answer. One was traffic modeling. What would happen, right now, our worst times, and we have traffic failure, is when you're coming up Senate Street and you wanted to take a left-turn lane going south. And usually, it's in the morning when the commuter traffic is and the school traffic, and again, when the school lets out. And then there's summer traffic, which everyone knows, summer traffic from July to August can get tied up coming into town. And again, it's very difficult for anyone to get up Senate Street. So the question was, what each of the solutions, which would be the roundabout, the traffic light, or the somewhat of a do-nothing option with some improvements for striping and signage. And so we really don't have the traffic model or an expert telling us, would one of those three options solve the problem? We all have opinions, but we didn't have an expert come and say, and show us actually what would happen. And there is some concern that a traffic light might jam things up. And while it will help people coming up Senate Street, it might create longer traffic delays along Main Street. The roundabout, which is the go-to option for many people, and everyone decided with it, and we looked at different options, and Brewster Academy was great, Alicia Bredman was with us here, and they even talked about maybe moving their main entrance to tee it up with a four-legged roundabout. So we went and did some options with that, so we really looked at it. But the roundabout brings upon other issues, which takes out trees, have some of the historical house, made effect more parking. And then we have the do-nothing option, which is, we can't spend ten million dollars and not solve the problem. But how do we look at it? We said, what would happen? So in the end, it was our impression that while we were coming to consensus that maybe one option was better than the other, we really never reached a consensus. And I think for most of the members of the committee, they're in agreement with the report. We have one member who thought that we had reached consensus, but, and that was, the last meeting we had, we said we were going to draft the report, bring it to the selectmen, and then if everyone was okay with it, the committee would be on hold. And the intent would be, at some point, that the board would okay the report. We would forward it on to DOT, and they are starting, they're waiting for us, actually, and then they're going to start the process. So they will start their traffic studies, they'll start their right-of-way work, and at some point, they'll come back to us, to the stakeholders, with their input, hopefully answering the questions about traffic modeling. Oh, the other question we had was on cost. Was one option much costly than the other? And was there enough money in the budget to do a roundabout, which might require moving a house and other significant infrastructure movements, or the traffic lights? So we didn't know about that. And then we also wanted to know, how are we going to handle pedestrians at this intersection? Because we have quite a bit of traffic from the Brewster Academy students, and also the Children's Center, children, and just general, this busy place. So we really didn't have good answers for that. So I think the committee's important was, let's put everything, all the work we did. And we had invited DOT to our meetings, and the last meeting, we had three DOT staff there, so they're aware that we're involved, which is very good. So at this point, we're looking for the selectmen to, if you have any discussions or any questions about the report, we can discuss that. But hopefully to okay the report and to allow us to submit it as the town with more questions and ask them to come back to us when they answer those questions, so we don't eliminate any of our options at this point. And I think that's kind of summarized it. And again, many of you were on the committee, so I'll be more than happy to have some discussion about it.
I guess I saw this as more of the draft one. This report has not been taken back to the committee. It was sent out.
Yes.
And so there was not an opportunity for the committee to sit down, read it, and see if there was anything that they wanted changed. So to me, it's still in draft form. I also, on the front, I felt that it should be, the steering committee's name should be on there too, with the staff and the steering committee. There was a lot of people that put a lot of time and effort into this, and I think they were, and that's part of getting everybody back together. The other thing is that I would like to suggest that the Board of Selectmen add a cover letter to the report expressing the town's preference before we send out the final report. And this report is the town's opportunity to let New Hampshire DOT know that it is what is important to the town of Wolfboro. And I was, some of the things I was thinking about, that the scenic view at Pickering Corner with the field and the water is important because it is the gateway to Wolfboro Village Center. And that's more of a sentiment of what that vision is up there. That in Wolfboro, we have a slower pace, which promotes the courtesy to yield to another vehicle, which is a key element of our traffic patterns that allow, makes it work without bypass lanes. And that we know we need lighting for our crosswalks, but we want to know the type of lighting, that it'll fit in with the charm and character of the community. And I think that would easily go along with the report, but it tells a little bit more. And those are my ideas, and I'll pass it off to the other members. It gives a kind of a flavor of what the community is as a letter out of the Board of Selectmen. Dave, do you have any comments?
Yeah. I went to quite a few of the meetings as well and gave my input, what it was worth. I still have my own feelings about this, and it's more or less, my feelings are that we enhance what we have now. I don't like the idea of the four-way roundabout. I just think that's too disruptive to what Linda has just said of the intersection. And we're talking only a half hour each day with the buses and stuff, especially when they let out. I think it was interesting, we got some information from Mr. Bowers just today or yesterday in our emails. This problem with parking in these roads has been going on since nineteen hundred, and so this is nothing new. I mean, for years, as you probably know, which I mentioned before, myself and two other police officers did traffic control there every summer for a long time. There used to be a light and a big white circle there. We'd stand on direct traffic, usually during the fairs and that kind of stuff, and even sometimes, both of July and whatever. So it's always going to be a problem. It always has been a problem. My feeling, from my perspective anyway, is do nothing. The courtesy thing, which you mentioned, is pretty relevant still.
I like what you said, enhance what we have now. So let's call it do nothing. Let's call it the enhanced what we have now.
Okay. I would be glad to.
I like that one.
See, there's another reason why you want to...
I'm in favor of the enhancement of that intersection, okay? But that's my personal view from looking and hearing and going to all the different meetings.
Sure.
And heard all of the different aspects of it. In fact, from moving the Richardson House to, you know, Brewster coming into a four-way. Oh, my God, can you imagine four roads coming into that intersection? Not just three? I mean, that seems really bizarre. But I'm in favor of the enhanced intersection. It's been there. It's always worked. We can't, we're, we still don't lose those thirteen spaces or more that we talk about with all the other types of enhancements to that intersection. So that being said, and everything else that we're talking about, and this also takes into play the idea of lifting those sidewalks up too, I believe, some, in some of those areas where they're really down below the road level.
Yes.
So, you know, there's some other enhancements that can happen there.
Yeah, absolutely.
It would be a plus to that intersection. And it doesn't go all the way down. I mean, it only goes up to, I think, Christian Ridge Road or one of those areas as far as the sidewalks. Most of the others are up at a level that's better. But, and I agree with Linda, I think I saw some cuts of crosswalks. I think it's important that we start lighting them.
Yes.
I think as part of this whole project, I think that's a good idea. But I do, would want to see the type of lighting. I know the, to me, the new streetlights we're putting in, those LED ones.
Yes.
To me, they're nice. They give a nice light.
Get used to them. They're not going away.
Yeah. But I'm saying that those lights give a nice light.
Oh, they do.
More direct.
Okay.
I do like them.
Oh, good. I thought you said you didn't like them.
No, I do like them. But I don't know about the intersections. We don't need anything that high, I don't think. We don't need anything that intense.
No, they would be different. They would be more Cobra-style, shining just in front where the traffic's coming towards the walkers, so that's...
Really, that's my feeling, from my perspective anyway.
And I don't know whether we can get some that look more like older-looking styles or darker color. You know, when I talk about the charm on how it looks as we get the light on to those intersections, I don't think there's anybody who doesn't believe that we need a lot more light on our intersections. Anybody else?
Well, I'm just going to follow up on that a little.
Yep.
Like the lighting at the hospital now in the parking lots and the lighting at the high school.
Yes.
You know, those are nice lights. They give a lot of light. They could be maybe a little smaller and lower, but that's style. It's the dark skies complacency as far as, you know, a light up, light on to the ground. So just to...
I'm going to run down, I'll go Brad, and then Paul, and I'll come back to you. We'll make our circle. Brad?
Yeah. I think you're going to kind of hear that the board's probably similar to what your committee is there and going to be all over the place, because I'm personally in favor of the roundabout. I like the three-legged roundabout. I'm not really, would want to bring Brewster Academy's road into it. I don't want to put too much in there. I look at it mainly as the safety aspect of it, especially with the kids crossing all the time. You know, we all know Brewster Academy, when that's in session, when they get their breaks, they're always, you know, walking across the road there and stuff. And the roundabouts offer a safer, safer way to get across through the intersection, because you have those islands in between there that they give a landing spot. So you're only crossing one lane at a time as opposed to crossing three if we keep a T-intersection in now, because you have a stacking lane, a turning lane, and the lane coming the other direction. So basically, some areas, you're going to go the width of three lanes there for them to run across at times. And I, looking at the design and how the roundabouts work, you know, in my opinion, they're kind of simplifying it, obviously, but it kind of works like a zipper. It just, you know, brings cars in and brings them out, and you can just keep coming in from all the different directions. I think you're going to get a steadier flow than you would if you definitely had a light there. Like a light, like you talked about earlier, you're going to get some huge stacking problems when that turns. So if the people out of Senate Street, they're going to be, they're going to be downtown, they're going to be up towards Bailey's, or Porcy's front porch now. It is already there sometimes in the summer now as it is, so I have to pick my times where I come out of my road even sometimes in the summer to get out, because it's already backed up beyond me, so. So I'm kind of, you know, as I said, you've heard the enhanced version of keep it as it is and stuff there. And now you're hearing from me that I like the roundabout part of it, so. I did have a question too, Dave. If we, we basically send a report like this to DOT, is this going to delay the project at all or have them come back to us with, trying to force us into something that we might not agree on later on once we, you know, learn more of the, what the traffic modeling has done and stuff like that, or...
Well, that's a good question. The direction we were heading was let them, they have budgeted over one hundred and eighty-seven thousand this fiscal year to start the engineering. We had no money left, so the idea of, if we could get them to model the three options, thereby maybe confirming what you are saying here, that maybe one option's going to jump out, the enhanced version might jump out as, because I, my fear is that when we have the real bad traffic, nothing's going to solve it, because we just don't have enough lanes. And I think that's the key. We don't have enough lanes, and we don't intend on putting a superhighway through Wolfboro. So the DOT does recognize this, in fact, where I learned, is context-sensitive solutions. Where we're trying to find the right solution for our context. So I think they are going to definitely listen to us. In fact, they're holding off. They're waiting for us to see what our recommendations are. So the thought process, as the report you have in, was let's not make a decision yet. But if we had to make a decision, I, my guess would be that majority would vote for the enhanced version versus the roundabout or a traffic light. So I think the answer is they will listen to us. I think that if we, if we give them a more specific direction, like we say, we don't want options A or B. We want to have the enhanced version. That might make life easier for them, but they still might look at these other options, because they have to do their due diligence. They are managing the project. It's a hundred percent their money, except they would give a standard light, whatever it may be. If we wanted a different light, we might have to pay the difference. If we wanted certain things that weren't their standard, then we would have to pay the additional money. So we might keep that in mind. We have time to appropriate money to put it away in case we want to do that. So that's, we have plenty of time. We still have six years. So I think they're going to take our input very seriously. That's why this report is important. And if the board thinks that we should go back to deliberate with the committee and take the vote, we could do that. Or we could keep it open, keeping our options open. So I think that's where we're at tonight.
The other thing too, is just thinking back too, is we kind of went through this last couple of years on OSPE on the Route 28, 171 intersection with the state there. Their recommendation, they came in, they kind of look at it strictly in dollars and cents. They kind of take this, at least in that project up there, they didn't really consider the safety part of it that much. They just want to do one turn lane heading south on 28, and that was it for two hundred and something thousand dollars. We fought them and argued and argued, and they're now going to do a roundabout there to like a one-point-five-million-dollar project somewhere around that vicinity. Something that's going to go in next year. So I just kind of cautioning that I think the state sometimes might look at just the dollars and cents of it and just want to, especially if they're funding it a hundred percent, they're just going to say, okay, this is all we want to do here for this intersection. It's going to be this smaller amount of money tied up in it, so.
Well, congratulations to you and OSPE for fighting, because safety is critical, because people have died at an intersection. Luckily, we haven't had, because we don't have the high speeds here. But that's actually very interesting, because dollars... But that's, that's actually very interesting because dollars are on their mind. They have a very limited budget. They're talking about money that hasn't even been appropriated yet at the federal level because all this money comes in from federal. So, if we were to, again, go with the enhanced version, which clearly would be less costly, I think that would make their life a lot easier because that may be where they say, hey, budget-wise, you know, they're already cutting back even before we start the project because there is not enough, there's no revenue from the state going to this project. It's all the federal revenue comes in and they're worried that they're not expecting it to go up and maybe even cut in the future. So, that is a real issue. But again, what's also important, where your community fought for it for what they wanted, and luckily, I mean, good, you got it, and the same thing here, which is why we've, we actually did bring your attention, so we have everyone's input. And, well, a lot of people came to the meeting, so that's, that's kind of a good thing, so that's, that's a good, good point.
Paul?
First, I want to thank you for, for the amount of time you put into it. This was, I think, I looked back through my diary, I think this is probably one of the first meetings I ever came to in the town of Wolfboro, was your context-sensitive solutions, you know, down the road.
Oh, 2010, yeah.
That's right. And I vividly remember, you know, the posters on the wall and people putting their fingers on things, and it just, it wowed me from a, from the point of view of this is the, I thought this is the way you should run government, and so I thank you for that. I think I missed two meetings now that I did my, my calendar check. I, I push back a little bit on anything that adds more pavement to the intersection, and I think I've, I've been pretty strident about that. I'm not clear that a roundabout is the right use or the right thing to do, but I use them every, every couple of days as I sojourn up to Plymouth. You know, we have students kind of going around, and I've never had a, you know, I've never had an issue. I, I think that, I think that what Ms. Murray has said is something that everyone on the committee is, is absolutely in agreement with. Our infrastructure and our architecture have got to kind of play against each other, and if we put something out there that, if it has a blinking light or a, or a red thing or whatever we do, and it doesn't fit in this town, we're going to get a lot of thought leadership from people, rightfully so. If we remove the distance between active traffic and the sidewalk, if we close it up, I worry, especially with guests at Pickering, with students coming down the street, God forbid, we might have a safety issue. So, I'm, I'm kind of with Brad on the, on the roundabout issue, but as I read your report, I felt that it represented what I recall from the meeting, which was, we need more data. And if, and that, and I think that's a smart thing to do as long as we don't get, you know, as long as we tell the state, we want to preserve the charm, we want to preserve the, the look and feel, we want traffic to move, but we want more data so that we can have a more informed decision. I'm fully supportive with that. Now, if that means you're going to get the committee back together to vote on it, you know, I'll, I'll go in that direction, but I think the report as written is what I, what I'm supportive of.
Dave?
I decided to go and visit roundabouts, so I went and visited a whole bunch of them, from Epsom down to a little one in Meredith and so forth, and every roundabout completely disrupts the area, period. And I'm sort of in the favor, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. I've been here for decades, and I don't think I've ever had to wait too long to turn on or off of Center Street. Those who live in Wolfboro know if they go up Center Street, they turn right on Laner Street if they see a lot of traffic, or they go on Pine Street, or they go on, they go on Crescent Lake. Any, any given day, you see people avoiding the crowd, they know what to do. My feeling, and this is a great report, would be if, if anything would be done, would be to put in a traffic light and see how that did. That doesn't require any construction at all, and it could always be removed, but I would be, I would be against moving the Civil War, or the Civil War statue and taking sections out of the street and moving houses. I, I, I think it, one thing about Wolfboro is Wolfboro is Wolfboro, and we don't have rotating neon signs or anything, and I think that, I, I've never heard anyone complain, I've never heard anyone complain about, as, as we all know, this has been a problem for 150 years, but somehow there we enjoy living here, and I don't think anybody's ever had to spend too much time making a left turn off of Center Street to South Main Street or else making a left turn off South Main Street into Center Street. Often the, you don't have to wait at all, and if you do have to wait, it usually isn't very long.
And the reason I thought that the, the report should go back is the committee as a whole hasn't sat down with it and talked about it, and it's kind of a proofing thing. Here we got Dave, enhanced one.
Yeah, that's a great one.
There may be some wording, some changes, and it gives the committee a chance to talk, and I really would like the Board of Selectmen to do a cover letter, and I think that we can come to some, you know, ideas of what we might look. I'd like to deal with the character of the town that we don't want to lose and state that to New Hampshire DOT, and we can say X number one of us like this or that, but I think we should put a cover letter onto the report. How does the board feel about adding a cover letter?
I'd be good with that.
Okay. Cover letter, okay?
I have another comment to make then.
Paul? Cover letter?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have another, some of you may know Beverly Hills, and in front of the Beverly Hills Hotel, six different streets come into a large section in the middle where there's nothing. They all come in, there's no traffic, they, they, there's no traffic line. The Caltrans has said a number of times that this is completely inadmissible, stupid, but it's still there. It's been there many years, and I don't think, I've ever, I don't think there's ever been an accident there. People creep out, they turn right, they turn left, and it's six different streets, and I think that's maybe a good example of tradition. Preserve Beverly Hills tradition in, in our own way. Pickering Corner would preserve the Pickering Corner addition, our tradition.
Dave?
I know it's probably be comical to the state, but the, the only building is for sale.
Yes.
They could buy it and straighten out South Wolfboro very quickly.
I don't think that's accurate, but that is an option. The, you can't straighten it out. You're still going to do a 90-degree turn, you're going to go over Mink Brook.
The building wasn't there, it'd be a whole lot easier.
It would be.
So, so we need to get moving on this. If you can call the committee together to just proof it, and the board, we should, I'm willing to work with Dave Owen and some others can bring comments to see if we can draft a letter that we can adopt next meeting, which is, I think, about the 14th of June, and get it out of here.
Okay. Would you request the committee to take a vote on what?
I'm not requesting. I want them to go over and, and see what the product is and talk within themselves and see what they want to do. I don't want to put a demand on the committee.
Again, the committee is a subcommittee, so again, obviously, we'd listen to your requests, but.
So, if I, if I heard correctly, I, the chairman said, there's no, we're not, we're not saying this is the one we want you to go figure out how to do. I think it's bring them all back, bring everybody back together, thrash, thrash about, and if it comes back the same way, it comes back the same way, and we'll, a cover letter on it, and off it goes. But I didn't hear anybody say, go figure out that one.
That was my feeling. Okay. Any other comments on this? All righty. Thank you both for doing all that work. Next item is the capital project update.
Thanks, Matt.
Okay, so the capital project update dated May 11th, which should also be up on the webpage, the town webpage, so other people who are listening can see. It's a summary report of our capital projects going back, actually, eight years. And what I'll do is start from the top and work my way down. I kind of tend to speak quickly on some of these items if there's not been a lot done, but please interrupt me and ask any questions if I, if I am going too fast or if there are questions. The waterline upgrades are actually being implemented now, that most of them are, are being tied in with the Center Street construction. Right now, we are working on utility sewer lines, and we have to do the sewer up on top of the hill and going up towards the Pickering Corner. Waterline work probably start in about a week and a half, two weeks, and that will be taking the water outside on Pine Street and Laner Street and finishing the section on Laner Street. The Route 28 study, we just talked about it, and that money is all up now, and then we'll wrap up with one more meeting and come back, and that, that project will be done. The Pine Street Crescent Lake Ave. project, we have appropriated money to do the waterline this year. We've been negotiating a contract with GW Brooks. They're mobilized, they're going to give us the bid prices that they bid two years ago, and so we are going to be working with them to keep that cost down, so it will be accommodation with the town forces, working with Brooks. And we anticipate when the Center Street project shuts down in July and August, we will then shut Pine Street down. But most of the traffic will still be flowing, it will have, you know, a traffic going, but we'll do the waterline up, halfway up Pine Street, which will be replacing the four-inch 1890's vintage waterline that is giving us problems anytime we have an upstairs condition.
So, I just want to make sure the public understands that we are going to stop the project on Center Street July 1 through Labor Day. No construction will be going on, but we will be going on Pine Street.
Correct. And then there may be some other work that's not in the right of way, so the, the rule is no more stopping traffic. So, there might be.
So, there still is going to be work on Center Street. That was a misconception some people had. We're only going to stop the construction in the road right away, but on the edges we will be still working.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, once we complete the waterwork this year with the money we have in the budget, we'll reconstruct maybe part of the sidewalk. Next year, we'll come back to complete the project with the drainage and the rest of Pine and Crescent. The downtown upgrade Phase 3, that money was held because some of that money was needed for the drainage project, and we are now, once we complete the frost field building, the highway crew is going to go on. That pipe has failed behind Harvest Market, which is creating big flooding events now every time it rains, so that work will start probably as soon as we finish it, probably about a week or so, and that'll wrap up that, that money in that project. The Center Street project, which we have two authorizations, and we have appropriated the money and the contract, so let's talk a little bit about that. First, I would like to apologize to anybody who has had to wait in traffic, or who got frustrated, who, who may think that they flagger didn't know what they were doing. It is very rough out there. Flaggers are, are people who get minimum pay, they have to stand out there sometimes eight to 10 hours a day, and sometimes there's confusion what's going on. Sometimes they're telling you something you don't understand, it, it's always good to just be, thankfully, you're not in New York City in a construction project. Because, you know, once you get by, you're five minutes away, and then it's all clear sailing. So, again, I do apologize if there is any, if someone's been treated inappropriately, please report to me because I am on top of these people, and I'm trying to make sure when we find out there is a problem, we'll, we'll address it. We do not, you know, it's no reason for any of those workers or flaggers to be disrespectful to the public, but in the same camp, hopefully, the public can be respectful to them. We are continuing. Right now, we've running into a lot of problems, so it is slowing the project down. We did get a late stop because spring kind of didn't want to end for us, and we are hopeful that we'll get all the utility work done by July 1st, and then when we shut down after Labor Day, we're really going to start digging things up. So, we'll be boxing out the, the section between Grove Street and Laner Street, so there'll be a lot of work there, and then we'll be putting in five, five and a half inches of pavement in three different lifts, so there'll be some significant delays at that time, and that's when the, so what we, now is just getting you used to what's, the real bad stuff's going to come in the fall. But again, please keep me informed, and we do have a, an update every week goes out. If anyone's interested, they can get on that mailing list. The sewer collection upgrades ties into that also. Most of these funds are committed to doing the sewer work where we had INI problems in upgrading the system, but we're not replacing the whole system. This whole system that was there is 1977 vintage, so we're only repairing where the leaks are and, and making those upgrades there. The liberty repairs, I'm also with Center Street, so we'll move on. Liberty repairs are, the fans have been installed, they're in, operating. I actually have, kind of embarrassed, I haven't been up there since, I think they're working okay. The balance of funds, we did find we have a structural problem with one of the areas in the floor. It's not a safety issue, but it's, we've got a little bounce in it, and we're working with Aaron Sturgis, who, who is a kind of a, specializes in historic buildings. He's, he's the one that did the other work and is working on the railroad station, so he's going to hopefully be in there shortly and for the rest of this money, and we'll be, we've done that project in this appropriation. Sidewalks upgrades, which were for South Main Street, we have done this in pieces. We, last year in the fall, we did some sections that were really bad where the sidewalk plow had gone through. We know we're not going to get all of South Main Street done. We're trying to tackle the worst sections as we can. We've had some problems, the deterioration this last winter, the sidewalk plow has ripped up more sidewalk pavement between the Corner Store and Carpenter School, a heavily-used sidewalk, and it's been brought to my attention, I covered it with the new Pickering House. It's kind of embarrassing, our sidewalk is such a mess there. So, I talked to Dave Owen about using the money to do that section right there, and we'd like to contract there and get that spiffed up. And also, if anyone's been out there, and some of you have, there is a, used to have a very wide curb cut, it was almost 50 feet wide. They've cut it down now so that when the Brummet Court now is down to about 20 feet, so they've added about 25 feet of curbing, and we're going to work with them on that. So, that's going to add another parking space on that location, and I think that's a good thing. They also requested this, when you come out of there, Brummet Court, and you look left, there are two parking spaces right there before you get to Corner Store. One of them, it really does block the view from the traffic that's heading south, and the request was, could we swap off, we'll add one on the right side, but we'll take one from the left side and center that, so it would make for better, better viewing, so it would be a net zero on the street, and I think it's a very good idea. It was brought to us by the owners of the Pickering House, and if you're okay, we'll make those changes.
Does that have any effect on your Route 20, on your Route 28 plan?
If we do the enhanced version, no.
Good job.
Good job.
He did it nicely.
So, so we hope to get to that right away. We're working with the local contractors and trying to expedite that, so we'll have that done and looking pretty by the, by the summer season. The dockside parking lot design, that one goes back a few years in which we had some public meetings, we had some input, we looked at different options, and I think we, we kind of started going in the direction of less amenities and more maximize the parking, make it safe. But then, we came up with other problems. We had the bathrooms that we funded this year, and that project we'll talk about in a second. We had the boat ramp, which was completed, we'll talk about later, and then we have obviously the dock expansion and dock repairs. So, we've decided to put this project on hold, so it'll sit there for a, a couple of years. The asset management plan is one of my thongs in my side. My consultant has, has been slow. We are progressing, and all of a sudden, we made some progress, and then a month's gone by, we haven't made any progress in the last month, so I'll be meeting with Dave Didion shortly, and our hope is that this summer, we will have a presentation that will be impressive, which will include not only buildings, but it will include what we've done with the water sewer system and what we're going to do, because we're going to talk about that a little later, the asset management grant we got this year for stormwater. Pleasant Valley Road Bridge, we have good news on that. I think we said last time that the project has been approved, and we could go out to bid. Of course, they told us too late, so we couldn't do it this year, but I believe we will be on the funding for next year, so in 2019, we'll have a warrant article, which will fund the balance of that construction project, and, and hopefully, we can, we can start construction sometime next year.
How much is that? Is that?
Million dollars.
Okay.
Approximately. I've got a more.
Right, and by the way, I, I see that the state legislature's putting another $20 million into the pot for Red Bridge repair.
Red List, yeah. So, that's good, yeah. So, we're, yeah, we're, we've made, our engineer did a good job, and I think so, we're in good shape, so that one will be a major project for next year. The solid waste building expansion, basically, project was completed, design was done, and and we got to the point of cost estimating it, but because it was not put into the CIP this year, and the way the economy goes and things happen, we decided to put a hold on it and wait until we get closer before we do our bidding on it and get some construction numbers for next year. Effluent disposal, our RIB project and the pilot, we talked last year, that was successful. We have shut it down, and now the RIBs are not taking any flow. We are now getting ready for our Pilot 5 project, and the engineering contracts have been issued. We're working very diligently on that. Our plan is to do some additional tests, because the site is drying up quickly.
Is it?
In June, we will plan on doing some test pitting, which will help us focus where the pilot will be located, and then in July, we'll start construction on it, and hopefully that we'll be able to get it completed by August and be back online no later than September 1. And that pilot is to prove that we can collect the water before it breaks out, and then reintroduce it back into the engineered natural solution, back into the brook, in which we would have a, so we could eliminate, because we still have some issues with the breakout, is damaging the wetlands between the top of the, you know, the toe of the slope and the brook. And that's really our major problem, so we will, we will, that, hopefully we answer it by the end of this year, as well as the cost estimates for the final construction and the permitting for the final. So we'll have a lot going on, but the pilot is our focus right now.
And how do you feel the storage pond height is? Are you comfortable with where it is now that we're not sending anything up to the RIB?
Well, right now, we have started up the spray area, so the spray area is helping us keep it, so up till May 1, it's climbing, then it starts to slow down. So right now, my analysis says we can get through to September without a problem.
Okay.
And the only thing that would make me nervous, if all of a sudden we had hurricanes, back-to-back hurricanes.
Okay.
Then I and I would go up, the pond would fill up, and David would get more gray hairs. The road upgrades, that's last year's, and all those projects complete the balance of the money here. The 16,000 encumbrances in engineering, which is on the Road Service Management System, that is about halfway done, and we'll have that ready for the CIP process, which will give us, instead of a one-year plan, to give us a longer plan, look at the roads, and hopefully develop that long-term plan we've been asking for for 10 years. The money that we have, the balance on Port Wedlin, we'll be issuing a contract, well, actually, we're going to be doing the work ourselves. The, all the work we did, we had one last drainage piece, which was to get from the bottom of Port Wedlin down towards Earl Shores Road. Right now, all the water's coming, the drainage seems to be working fine, the road's held up really nice over the winter. We did get the shouldering done last week, so the place looks good, but the drainage pipe from the Port Wedlin down to, has not been done, and we're, we've negotiated an easement with Dave Nunes, and he's going to be putting in a driveway there, so we're going to put the drainage in, and that work should hopefully begin beginning of June and be done by the summertime. The Mass Lanning Parking Lot, obviously that construction's been completed. The only thing we have left is we say some educational signage. That sign has been ordered, and we are going through the parking lot, see how it weathered pretty well over the winter. We are still working with the association on some things, and again, hopefully we get those educational signs up, which if anyone has not seen it, or we have a piece, we'll keep it coming back for the summer, please take time. They have many what we call best management practices in use, which is treating the stormwater before it gets into the lake, and we're very proud of that. We had a very successful water summit, which we demonstrated some of those things, and thanks to all the people that came up and supported that event. The Dockside Boat Ram, we, Northeast Barge completed that, we really got stuck at the end of the year, they got in a little late, weather came in quick and hard on us, and nothing was as planned. So we had our challenges, but kudos to Northeast Barge, there was no change orders, they did everything they were supposed to do, and I believe the project has turned out very well. If anyone has a chance to use it, we're now four feet wider, and we have an angle, so you have a lot more room to negotiate, and we still have a little bit of punchless items there, but that project is pretty much complete. Renovations of the old railroad freight building. Well, we have not spent anything here, a lot has been going on. John Sims, who's been heading up this, who's really got a lot of energy and has put his heart and soul into it, is working extremely hard, I believe he will be asking an appointment with the board of selectmen very soon to go over where he's at with that project, and just to give you that that project does have an impact on the road extension.
Road, yeah.
Railroad Ave Extension, which we, we had put that in with our road money, so I'm going to talk about that a little bit, but that project does have an impact, because we can't pave the road until we decide what we're going to do with that building. If we're going to put a full foundation, which is their plan, then we want to stay at least 10 feet away so we could have a safe excavation. So we'll have, I'll talk about that in a little bit, but just so you, yeah, the railroad freight building is, they have completed their study, and they are making two grant applications, pretty significant applications for the L-Chip and for some other grants.
Northern Borders Regional Commission.
Thank you. So, so I think, again, John, so I'll let him give you an update on that at the next meeting. North Wolfboro Road, that was a specific money that was given to us by the state, and it has been issued a contract expedition to Frank Carroll. We, unfortunately, we have to do some drainage work first, so make sure that, because we have some areas with the high groundwater table, so we anticipate getting that in the summer. When the traffic's really bad here, we'll go up North Wolfboro when there's no traffic.
[laughing]
It's a little cooler in the shade up there, too.
Very nice.
All right, so that brings us to 2018. 2018 was a very good year at the polls, we did very well, and we have a whole list of projects here to prove it. First, and I have been assisting Cindy on basically the project management, not any of the details with regards to the building, but just on how we're working together, I think it's important with my experience in design-build, we have decided to use a construction manager and an architect as a team, so it is technically a construction management form of project delivery, but it is, really has a lot of elements of design-build. We are, we are work, we're back and forth with the library committee, who's come up with a lot of good ideas. We had the energy committee come up, and they had a lot of ideas which could further enhance the building, and we're looking at pricing those options out and trying to see what we can afford versus what, and how much, you know, some of the ideas, you're chasing a little bit of energy savings for a lot of money, that doesn't make sense, but so we're looking for the good investments that makes some sense, that have good business decisions, and I believe the, we're, so the only thing that's happened at this point is the contract has been issued to the architect for $425,000, and we have a memo of understanding with the construction manager, so they're working on it now, so as they get pieces of the drawings, they're bidding them out, and we'll be working closely with the construction manager on these, on the parking lot, as we talked last night at the planning board. Obviously, we have some, we've got our challenges there, that's going to be a tight site in that construction, so we are trying to, that design is developing, and again, we're hopeful that it'll begin late summer. Westwood Drive, the town voted to make Westwood Drive a town road with the conditional approval with the idea that we're going to have a betterment assessment. We have issued a contract to our Frank Carroll for the grinding and paving and adding some gravel. Right now, we're working on the permitting, we have one major culvert that has to get permitted, so that project's going to get delayed a little bit till we get that permit, but we could be in there shortly clearing the brush and the road, and I have still working with Joe Borelli out there, and our hope is that that project will probably slide to the summer, to the late summer, and hopefully be done by the fall. So, let's see, 2018, okay, asset management grant for Stormwater. We have finally got our signed contract, Dave, I think we got that to you this week, it should be, the original should be coming in shortly for signature, and we're going to be focusing our efforts on the waterfront, working back. Underwood Engineers has actually hired an intern to help get more man-hours for less costs. We'll be working closely with them, and the intent there is to locate each catch basin, assess its condition, make sure we understand where it's tied into, so we're going to develop all our subcatchments. So this is kind of a double. One is going to be about our infrastructure, knowing when we have to replace it, but also about stormwater treatment. This is going to allow us to do a better job of understanding that and working with the association, they came up with the idea, maybe we'll start marketing, a lot of people, we take it for granted, I do, that every catch basin goes to the lake, but it's surprising to see somebody leap here, but we don't understand that. Some people, oh, there's a sewer, it must go to a plant somewhere. But everyone must understand, our road sewers, all our stormwater from roads and parking lot all goes to the lake. So if you throw a cigarette butt into a parking lot, eventually you might see it as you're swimming in the lake, so be careful of that. But we're also going to be working on that, so that'll be a dual one, and that project will be starting up within the next 30 days. That's also, again, while it's an SRF loan, once the job is completed, it gets paid off, so technically it's a grant. On the town road upgrades, we are going to major this year, we didn't pick anything easy, no easy overlays, no easy jobs, or we didn't have to do drainage, we took three tough projects, College Road from Route 28 out to Westwood Drive, Kiwaden Road, which is, we've heard about Kiwaden Road and all the speed bumps that are there, and then Trotting Track, which is falling apart, if anyone's been out there recently, it's kind of a mess. Our schedule is...
Dave, are you rebuilding Trotting Track?
We're going to rebuild.
You're going to rebuild it?
Yes, it's going to be ground up, gravel added and under drains, especially in areas where we have soil moving out by the nick. And our hope is that that, we've got to be careful, though, because some of our detour goes over Trotting Track Road, so that project will wait until July and August when there's no detours, so that we won't detour people into another traffic delay. So we've issued a big contract with Carroll on that, and then the rest of the money will be used for drainage by town forces. Dock repairs, we have issued a, two contracts, one with Ty and Bond as our engineer. The engineer, Duncan Miller, who's a specialist on this activity, who did the asset management plan, is now working with our contractor, which is Northeast Barge, and we are design building the repairs, the materials have been ordered, and we anticipate Northeast Barge will be putting all the cross gracing will be going in in the next couple of weeks, as well as the other repairs that we needed to, so we can have safe docks this summer, in supporting the smaller dock where the, what's that little wooden boat comes in?
The, what is it? No, it's not the Winnie Bell, it's...
You know what I'm talking about.
Molly B.
Millie B. So that's, that's one of the areas we've got to get reinforced. At the same time, they are working on the major repairs, which will not be done this year, but to find out what, where they are and how much it's going to cost and the permits for those. So that's kind of secondary right now, where all our energy is focused on the emergency repairs, getting those done, and then we'll be doing the permitting and the design of the repairs for the rest of the docks. At the same time, we also issued a contract for the dock expansion, understanding what the expansion is, where we'll be, and trying to coordinate the two projects, to make sure that we do not do a repair that then gets knocked out because of an expansion. So we want to be very careful with that, and those two projects will be coordinated because it's the same engineer working on that. Again, I do see that project going through the summer into the fall, so we won't have any reports for you, we'll be, right now, focusing our effort to get in and out of the water before things get busy, and then we'll probably have something for you in the fall with regards to the other stuff. Back to the effluent disposal, we talked about that, again, you can see we've issued some contracts already. We will be talking about the land negotiation, I think we have some good news, we'll be talking tonight about that, so hopefully we'll be able to talk more about that next meeting. And the balance of that money will go towards the land purchase and then the construction of Pilot 5, which we talked about that earlier. The sewer INI reduction to 50,000, which was issued, we had a $20,000 for doing additional TV and cleaning, and then we're looking at the low-hanging fruit and developing construction projects. No one major project, I see a lot of smaller projects, again, it's death by 1,000 cuts, so it's not like we just can replace one sewer and fix the problem. We're going to be going around patching the system, and that'll continue this summer. At the water treatment plant, we have a major contract, project for upgrading the control panels and the supervisory control and data acquisition computers. We are working with A&amp;D Instruments, which is our preferred vendor there, and they've come up, and we've issued some POs to them. We're hopeful that project's going to go well and maybe under budget, so we might be able to do some other work within that authorization. And that is, again, if you've seen our water plant, I think it's in great condition, it looks almost brand-new, and most of the building is great, 20 years old, but electronics, you just can't polish them, you can't clean them, they just, at a certain age, you've got to get rid of them, and we're at that point, so that's what that project is about. The, on the water side, the second project is the Pine Street waterline, and that is, again, we talked about that, we're going to be working with Brooks on the design bill there, and that project hopefully will take about six weeks, starting after July 4, and hopefully be done before Labor Day. The Bay Street sidewalks, we are planning on developing a request for proposals. We have a lot of work with Underwood Engineers, and they come in my go-to engineer, but I felt maybe this might be a good project to give someone else a shot, so we're going to do an innovative approach to that, and it's very challenging, the more I, every time I drive down Bay Street, I kind of have to stop and look and say, wow, this is a tough one. We have really difficult utility pole locations, friends of buildings, grades, and I think the first thing we're going to end up doing, we're going to ask different pre-qualified consultants to give us how they would approach this project, knowing that we're at a preliminary conceptual level, and some of the feedback, I think the first thing I might start off with is a public hearing. We need to find out from the public, have everyone who lives on that street tell us, tell us what their problems are, tell us what their needs are, where are your foundation drains, where are your drainage problems, what do you think about traffic? And then, before we go out and do the survey, I was going to go do the survey first, but I think that's good input, that we might have that input first. So hopefully, we'll be selecting a consultant within the next month or so, and then maybe towards the late part of the summer, we'll have a public meeting and get their input, and then we'll do the survey, and then we'll come up with conceptual plans. The Dockside Capital Reserve, which, again, I think, kudos to the voters for supporting this and the selectmen, we are really, from a financial way of doing business on our CIPs, putting these capital reserve funds is a great way to do business, and I think by putting that money aside, we know we're going to have a major expense, and even if it, maybe it won't be next year, but at least we start saving for it, and I think we'll continue to do that. And, again, the highway solid waste vehicles, again, that cap reserve, okay, actually, we have, we have a second one for the parking lot, so we put some money in that, which, again, is out two more years. The highway solid waste vehicles are, that's the money going in, we have two pieces of equipment that were bid out, and I think we issued one purchase order, we have another one coming, so that's, that's no big news there. The water treatment cap reserve, again, that's the money going in, we have issued contracts. The sludge project finally is, I would say, 95% complete, all the railings were put in, it looks really nice. Now we're focused on the air piping, and it has become a problem that we were hoping to put off, it was a lot worse, I mean, it's anticipated, but because of the capital reserve fund and because of the flexibility we have, we're able to move things around, and that project will be undertaken this summer. The building maintenance cap reserve, again, another one, right now, hold our breath, 95, we're hoping that we don't have to spend that money, we actually can build that up and start lining up with the asset management plan to identify where the projects are. It's there in case we have an emergency, and hopefully, right now, I'm not aware of any. I did add the capital outlay projects from the water side, to give you an update on those also. The water meters, which right now, the water department is finishing up flushing, we have another week of that, and then, again, we're working on some of the waterline issues with Brooks, so we see this probably going off into the summer before we order and start installing the water meters. The one town with the plow, that was bid, a Ford truck was a low bid, and we were very surprised, got a heck of a price and a very good piece of equipment, and that was issued to Stoner Motor, and we hope to get delivery later on this year. And the last one there, it was the water treatment plant security gates, again, we just haven't got to that yet, that's kind of a low priority, we will get that bid out and hopefully done this summer.
I have one question for you. As I recall, when we talked about the dockside parking lot, we had not put in that design any stormwater basins, and I wonder if we're moving it out, whether we shouldn't look at having some catch basins and stuff down there if possible.
That's what we have to do to make this town the greatest in the world, we've got to have those stormwater treatments, and I, good, I'm glad to hear you say that. It would raise the price, it's very difficult because we're so close, and I believe the solution would be raising the parking lot a little bit, we could do some stormwater treatment. And, again, that project, again, being delayed, hopefully will come around. At the Water Summit, I think a lot of people probably heard, but there was a lot of good ideas and discussion about how do we fund these best management practices, and right now, we've been very fortunate because of the Lake Wentworth Association and their strong support. We've gotten three grants, we've got a grant for Rus Pond, but it's very difficult working on a grant, there's a lot of red tape, the town has to do a lot of in-house things, and it's quite a burdensome. I think we need to continue this discussion. I would like to bring up to the board and potentially the CIP committee, maybe the idea about a cap reserve fund for water resources, for projects like this, that we start saving, that we put it, you know, every year, we say, we've got to put so much money in, even if we don't have a specific project, we start, we, like we're doing with the other assets, our stormwater system is an asset, will now identify a lot of projects, and these BMPs, there's many areas where this could go into. So I think we should think about a potentially a cap reserve fund for water resource, protecting our water resources. And another idea, which I'm not even sure is legal, we talked about following up on the idea whether or not tax credits for, we have a lot of people in the water, where they are at the bottom of the hill, they're getting all the increased runoff from subdivisions above them, their property, our values are not going down. Their property, our values are not going down. Everything seems to be going up, but we have to be very careful, because the erosion, the sand sediment getting into the lakes is a problem for us. And we need to stay ahead of it. Again, again, we talked a lot about that Saturday. And I think we will continue to do that, and I'll try to hopefully push that forward when we come up to budget season next year.
Yeah, and I was gonna do a report when I did my committee reports, but you have talked about most of it. But you also were talking about the phosphorus with people, and how we could get that out of the water. And then there was a panel up on the stage who really answered questions of people who attended the event. And I thought it went very well, about 100 people.
Yep.
And I wanted to let you know that Dave Ford declared Wolfboro the best town in the world, and Matt Sullivan the best dressed town planner. So we had a great day. And I wanna thank you, David and Matt, for taking a Saturday to come and do that. It was a great education piece for the people who were there, and it was taped, and I hope a lot of people see it.
And everyone who heard that comment, please, it was said in jest. When I say Wolfboro, I mean everybody, all our neighbors, so I don't wanna discount anyone else. Not to feel... It's the area we live in is really, really great. And the part of that statement goes, it's not so much, it's the people. It's the people that show up on a Saturday morning, on a beautiful Saturday morning, because they care about their water resources. People that come to our steering committee meetings, so they wanna know what's going on. And sometimes they have loud, you know, opinions, but we like to hear those opinions. And I think that's what makes us the greatest town in the world. Hey, one thing I forgot, I don't know, did anyone see this picture in the report?
Yes. Yes, it was here.
Somehow, I think I skipped over the bathrooms.
You did.
You did.
Anyone notice that?
No.
Where was the bathroom?
Should've been on this side somewhere, so I know I saw it earlier.
Oh, there it is, okay, it's on the second page, Water Article Number 17. The public, almost like maybe we're subconscious, because I'm behind schedule, and I didn't wanna talk about it, but we... So I'm sorry, so we have to go back to that, is that okay? The appropriation was for 150,000. I had talked about that project being done this spring. I was out of my mind, that was not even possible, but sometimes I get too excited. So the reality was, the project is much longer. It would extend it into the summer season with a closed bathroom and porta-johns. We didn't want that. So I have, trying to line up all my contractors, so after Labor Day, then we can start, get all the outside work done before the weather turns cold, have it buttoned up, so we can do the finishes in the wintertime, so we'll be ready for the spring. Part of that project is gonna require us to put in a new water sewer service to the backside. Greg Rock, who is the owner of the building where the shops are on Main Street, and who has the long-term lease with us for the building, for the restaurant, has approached me with the idea, and he would like to, us, the board, to consider losing about three parking spaces, which are in that little cubby between where the ice cream stand is and the ramp in the back of his building, where he has a nice garden. The idea is to create a nice pedestrian space. We're gonna be digging that up anyways. He'd be willing to pay for the landscaping and the tree. And we would work with him with regards to finishing, whether or not we would get everything in, but the idea is some nice benches there, because it's a beautiful view when you're looking out to Smith River. Be some more public space for hanging out, having your ice cream with your children. So I wanted to bring it to you and see what you thought about that. And hopefully, if you think it's okay, we can kind of move forward with it and see if we can get this done as a public-private partnership and another enhancement down there. Of course, the bad news is, if we lose three spots, those are tough spots to get into. The actually, that we are increasing our parking, you know, out towards Railroad Ave when we upgrade there. And the spaces we created with the bigger parking lot, the hope would be that we could encourage more people down there, have more space for them, and less for the cars. So what do you think about that?
Well, losing three spaces is quite a bit. Like the concept.
Yeah, I guess I'd kind of like to see a little design and see if we could not lose three. I think when we sat down with the, and did our public hearings, the decision was that we wanted to keep the parking space and do away with the green space. And I didn't know if we could do it so it wasn't as wide, maybe not have the benches, but have some green space in there. Just look at a different design. I mean, if we lost the one closest to the river, that one's very hard to get at.
Well, the three of them are real difficult to get in and out of. They're really kind of, they're dangerous. And we have, obviously, a lot of parking spaces that are dangerous in town. But it really wouldn't work unless we took at least three of the spaces, because you would have half... I can go back and look, I guess we could tighten that up to maybe two spaces, but that's only, each space is only about nine feet in width. So we're talking about three spaces, 27 feet, with the angle maybe 30 feet. 30 by a 40-foot area makes a nice, comfortable pedestrian area. If we only took one space, it would be, you know, 10 feet by that 30 feet would be more... Still would be something. And if that's the direction, we could kind of see if we can narrow it down to one space. But I would like to go for the three spaces and do the...
Could we make smaller ones and make... We have one for motorcycles, or make it for compact or smaller? Maybe motorcycles, so we don't lose it all? I think you were...
I, so I'm gonna introduce a word, maybe that people don't wanna hear. But when I look at parking, I think car storage, metal storage. And, you know, Mr. Bowers has very capably shared with us that this has been a problem for 100 years. So it's like the weather, we don't like it, and, you know, we haven't done much about it. Then I look at the, this dockside area. This is our, this is like the front door of the town for the lake. And now I got it, I got the business model that, you know, we wanna keep all the car storage, metal storage we can. But, you know, one or two spaces, it's not gonna break the bank. And I think, you know, Selectman Murray's comment that maybe what we do is look at it for motorcycles, or Vespas, or, you know, something bike storage, I think I'd be really supportive of something like that. I think the car storage conversation is just something we're gonna have to deal with.
Okay.
I think we can be creative.
Okay, let's maybe be creative, and maybe I can come back to you with some plans, and maybe we can mock it out, because we got some paint. We're gonna be ripping it up anyway, so maybe I'll paint out some options, and maybe we can take a walk and revisit it.
Yep.
I think that would be a good idea.
Good idea.
Oh, down the docks too, I should note, I don't know if we had an unfortunate person stepped on the gas when they thought they were stepping on the brake and shot themselves into the lake. She is okay, I did meet with her, and she was embarrassed, but she's okay. We had people, again, like, why this is the greatest town? Someone jumped right in the water, helped her out, someone else pulled her out of the water. A lot of concerned citizens came around, and... But the good news is, our crews were out there, we fixed it all, it's all ready to go. Smith River Canoe Race this weekend, so we wanna make sure everyone's there, so we got it all cleaned up. And kudos to our highway crew for jumping in there and getting that fixed. And again, I think we should be ready to go for the weekend.
Thank you, Dave.
Any other questions about any other public works or anything else? Great, thank you so much.
Thanks, Dave.
Get back to this, all right. Old business, and I do have one item under old business. I got an email from Becky Morrow, and she is unable to be at a Wednesday, June 13th, Selectman's meeting, which is where we changed our date. She had in the past told me that she had something on Tuesday and Wednesday night, and since it wasn't a night that we were gonna have a meeting, I didn't see any issue. She could meet on Thursday, the 14th. Would that work for everybody, just change it to the 14th? It's Wednesday, it's Thursday night.
It would work for me.
Works for me.
June 14th?
Yep.
What time?
We'll just go at 6:30, we'll just move the meeting over. Okay, Paul?
Yes.
Okay. Dave, will you note that? And I will send an email to her, or either you or I can send one to her. Okay. Anybody else have any old business? Any other business?
I'd like to request that I get an access on my property for a destroyed building, removed building. I mean, I want it changed, but I don't want it to be, I probably should bring something in front of the town, but also the dock we talked about, the right-of-way for the town docks.
I think that was in the last minutes, Dave. Did you do anything on that, working on a deed?
In essence.
A letter?
No, I didn't.
I mean, no, our urgency, if some neighbors are gonna sell the building.
Yeah, it was.
We just want the town to be protected, that's all.
It is, it was in the last minutes what he was asking.
Okay, I'll go look that up and see what we need to do.
Can you just do it in the summer, in the spring or something?
Well, he's here, he can get it done. Any other... Okay, Mr. Owen, Town Manager's Report.
Just a few things to report out. At your last meeting, you may recall that the board granted a discretionary preservation easement for a barn on Browns Ridge Road. It turns out, when we had Town Council prepare the actual preservation easement document and do the title search in preparation for having it recorded at the Registry of Deeds, that the property is in the name of an LLC. And so he advises that they need to make new application with the proper name of the owner and go through the process again. And we've been trying to get ahold of the applicants. We've left messages for them, but we haven't been able to have actual contact with them yet. There was this morning, an unfortunate incident in the hospital parking lot early this morning, where an individual shot himself. And it was basically, I guess you could say, a suicide. The individual died, and the police department was out there responding early this morning. The lot merger that the board voted for at your last meeting for the McBride parcel to get merged with the Public Safety Building parcel, that was approved by the Planning Board last evening. They also approved the site plan for the 390 line replacement. So that's going forward. Also, I thought I would let you know that the bad check that we had reported on a few weeks ago, that one of our checks got diverted and ended up into somebody else's checking account. Citizens Bank has made us whole. They have deposited the amount of $7,888.84 into our account. And that's the way they resolve the issue. I don't know if they got the money from...
Somebody else.
Somebody else, or whatever, but they made us whole.
Was the one that went there, it exists?
Correct. And finally, I thought I would let you know that we have received six applications for the Finance Director position so far. And of course, we still have a week and a half or so before the closing date. So hopefully, we'll get some more applications, but it looks like you've got some good candidates. That's all I have.
That's it?
My final report.
Okay, yes, that is your final report. Job well done. Okay, committee reports. I'll start here with Dave Bowers and go that way this time.
I went to the EDC meeting, I've been doing some library things, and also I've been doing some mapping and photographing of the town.
Okay, Dave?
The ZBA meeting, Emergency Management meeting, Safety Building meeting, Land Resources Committee, and also the Buildings Committee, which is looking at all the assets, buildings and stuff that the town owns. And that's, Land Resources and Buildings Committee is almost once a week at this point.
Brad?
Last night, we had a Planning Board meeting, as Mr. Owen said, the 390 line. We also had the Public Library came in for their public hearing, which was continued into next month, because I've got more information to get together. And I have a Friends of Libby meeting tomorrow night, so that's it.
Paul?
I attended the Budget Committee, they've elected their new team for the year. Mr. McDonald continues as chairman, that was an interesting conversation. I spent time with the Town's Energy Committee meeting. They've asked to adopt me as their select person's liaison, and with no objection. Unless you guys wanna volunteer, I signed up for that. I attended, on behalf of my colleague, Mr. Harriman, the Planning Board meeting a week ago. We've had a Energy Subcommittee meeting for the Master Plan, and that's going along, actually, pretty well. There'll be another one next week. I've gone out with Mr. Owen's good auspices and met people. I was at Parks and Rec last week, spent some time, just meeting folks. Same thing down at the MED, meeting people at the Electric Department, Assessors Office. I had some questions and, you know, kind of found my way in there. And I just wanna get around and meet as many people as I can during my new tour. So that's what's going on, thanks.
Okay. Well, I went on the Mount Washington Shakedown Cruise with Brad.
Tried to.
We saw you guys on TV.
We had a great time, it was a lovely day. Then Dave Semical and I went to Arbor Day, saw those fifth graders. And I have also gone on the Master Planned Community Facilities Committee, and we've done the Public Works Complex on Pine Hill, the Electric Department Building on Milton Road, and the Clark House Complex. I went to the EDC meeting. I was also at the Emergency Management meeting. I went to the Town's Milfoil Committee meeting and the Milfoil Joint Board Committee. The Town Milfoil will be doing hand-pulling, and we're not sure exactly what date. They're supposed to come in, in the end of June, and it seems early for us, so we're gonna see if we can get that contractor to come later. This is the year we're going to do a full chemical treatment in September. Last year, the milfoil was out of control again, and every so many years, we have to come and hit it with the chemicals. I was at the Water Summit, it was a wonderful event. And I was at the Chamber Social before I came here tonight, so... Alrighty, do I have any questions from the press? No? Any public input? Anybody? Nope? Hey, board, I need a message, I motion to go into non-public session.
Second.
Paul?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, we're on our way.
What do I do with that?